Theater and start doing something.
Okay.
Yep, end of September. It's a grand opening. Nope, nope, grand opening now. And it's a gate. Oh, yeah, yeah. They would have never done that had they known all these issues.
You know about.
It's looking good.
No, it's not good.
It opens into just about September. They're bringing in.
I better text my girl.
That's from Murray. I can't remember her name. It was in The Greatest Showman. It's true. She's doing a concert. That's the big gala.
Lauren.
Allred.
Yes.
That's her name?
Yeah.
Yes, that's her, they're bringing in. So she's doing two nights of concerts at the new theater.
Oh, cool.
What part did she play?
She was the voice behind the Night Gill. What's her name?
Usually.
She sang the song. She wasn't in it.
She was.
Oh, the one that.
Yeah, Don't Touch Ya.
The lady never sang.
Yeah, yeah.
She didn't actually sing.
So. Yeah, so she's singing, yeah, so she's. Yeah, so she's doing, she's doing two. She's doing a VIP concert. You know, mayor and all that stuff. And then.
She's from Murray, though?
Uh huh, she's from Murray.
That's surprising.
Yeah, she's from Murray. So that's why she's doing this concert. Then I've got to do all this floral stuff. For the grand opening.
I'll take notes.
And then handle the VIP stuff. It's like, whatever.
I'm just going to start.
Uh, it's okay. No, because she's got this, I mean, she just thinks she's a really big deal.
Well, excuse me.
Her writer is.
Bye.
Isn't she George Washington's kid? I can't imagine my phone.
So we're not going to make you.
I know, my phone will be ringing. In this. And then I'm going to get in that.
It's a compromise.
Yes, so I'm sure he said.
Yeah, but is that.
So we should be good.
Campus is nuts today.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
But if you guys get a chance, you should come in. They're having an open house. It's really pretty. I'll find out the date. It's really friendly.
The State Street is not old.
Yeah, it's the old Murray Movie Theater. It was opened in 1938 originally.
That's right.
And it's all restored. Yeah, just the block down. It's really pretty. They've done a really cool, they've done a really good job with that. Even though it was. Way more than what they thought. It's that water table stuff just kind of killed them.
All those kennel coffee.
It looks really good.
We start 5:59? Uh, break 10 seconds. Should I? Well, this is the official. This is the official. I don't, I didn't read that anywhere. The Camels aren't official. I like it. Okay, I'm official this morning.
Hello, at 6 o'clock, we're going to start our meeting. And we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, welcome. Did you get a roll call? And Dustin will not be here as well.
Perfect. Chair Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Tippett?
Here.
Commissioner Shino is excused. Commissioner Licky?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
And Commissioner Casperian is excused.
Thank you very much. Did you get a chance to review the minutes? And how are you feeling about those? Pretty good?
Yeah, I didn't see anything. Good.
Okay, great.
Didn't see anything.
Let's approve those, should we?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 11th, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are now going to start our public hearing. And first is Brett Lavelle. Request a small-scale master plan approval for an eight-unit duplex development located at 6755 South 300 East in the single-family residential dash one zone. SF dash one zone. And Liz is going to present.
Yes, thank you. I hope you don't mind. I just did a combined presentation for this and the next item. So they're very intertwined. Um, so because the project, which is located on 300 East, just across from that other project that we had approved to the west a little bit ago, um, this sits just on the corner of that and what turns into Akoma Road. They are just over an acre, which hits a threshold for a small scale. Though this will look very straightforward because they're just kind of doing a lot-by-lot development. There's no common area. So it doesn't look like a typical small-scale master plan, though the code requires that anything over an acre has to do it. So I've included a copy of their site plan. It will be four duplex structures that will then be subdivided for individual ownership of those. So that's the site plan for the small scale. And then the preliminary plat, which just shows those individual lots. But no building elevations included, no landscaping, because they will sell them and have individual people put them on. So none of those have been determined at this time.
Nice. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Have you received any comment?
No, no comment.
Okay, great. Is our developer here? Do you want to come up so we can grill you? Like a hamburger?
Oh, my goodness.
No.
You know that was great.
We just want to say thanks. This is kind of a cool moment for us. Um, I'm a developer. My grandparents have owned this property since 1956. So I just want to say thanks to city and staff. Been pretty cool to watch this go through the whole process and kind of see a dream of my grandpa's come true. So, thank you.
Any questions? I don't have any questions at this time.
My only question, and it's, I mean, it doesn't change much. Do you intend to sell them or do you intend to rent them as individuals?
No, uh, we wanted to do a for-sell product just to, yeah. My grandma, yeah, they were pretty particular about their yard. So we're hoping that by doing for-sell creates a little more pride of ownership and is an asset to the community. Thank you.
Very nice.
I have a question. And also, it doesn't really affect. How much did your heart sink when it was just over an acre and you had to do some extra work?
Elizabeth was very patient with me. We've, we've developed a lot and we've a lot of subdivisions. This definitely isn't our first rodeo. And Elizabeth was very patient with me because I'm like, what the heck? Right? We're just doing, because they were asking for, we're going to be very beautiful, right? And we're going to abide by code. But a little, from other cities, and you all do it how you want, but it was a little out of the norm for us.
Yeah. I was just curious.
Appreciate the staff being, they've been very patient. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, since this is for public hearing, do we have any?
All right, I'll sit down.
Anybody that needs to come up and talk, come on up. State your name.
My name is Gray Buck Cockaine. I live in the subdivision just to the north. This is, and perhaps this isn't the appropriate place to say it, but as someone who lives in a subdivision with a bunch of Bradford pears as the primary tree, they're not the best. They smell really bad. They look pretty for like a week. The birds do like them, but they don't live very long. And they don't last very long because they're prone to breakage. And so I just wanted to encourage the developer, if possible, to plant trees, but not Bradford pears. If that is something that we could essentially get out of Midvale and replace them with native trees, maples. If we still want the birds to be happy, we could do service berries. But that's, that's basically my aim is I feel like the area is losing a lot of old trees due to new development. New development's going to happen. I would just urge trees that are not Bradford pears. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adam?
Yeah? If I could just insert this. So the city recently adopted a, what's it called? Street Tree Guide. And the pear is a highly discouraged.
Nice. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up. State your name.
I didn't know it's, my name is David Garce. I live at 369 East Akoma Road. So we're almost directly across the street from the development. First of all, we have no problems with the development and encouraged development in our area. I think it increases the value of our home and the other homes that are on Akoma. So we live on the, right on the curved part of Akoma. So as people are coming off of 30 East and then moving towards where Akoma and Perrine split, the road width there is 36 feet gutter-to-gutter. But when we get right to my house, it drops down to 26 feet. And so I'm going to, what I'm leading to is that the whole street of Akoma is 26 feet wide. And when there is parking on both sides of the road, which happens every day, there's only room for one car to pass. And it's, and so the result of that is when people come from either the, the east side, from 7th East westward, there's a, there's a certain, I don't know, group of people that either are not homeowners or are living there a very short time. But it is a very dangerous situation. And it's even more dangerous now that we have the development that's just on the west side of 30 East that's, that's being phased in. And like I said, we, we love development. Everybody has a right to, to do that. I don't, I'm not trying to discourage it at all. But what I am suggesting very strongly, and I've talked to a number of my neighbors, that they agree with, with this concept, is that really it's up to the city officials to make, to make this safe and right. So we've got, if there's eight units, there's going to be two, at least two cars per, per house. So that's an extra 16 cars that are going to be traveling up and down that. Plus the other 27 or 28 units, again, multiplied times, you know, two or two and a half cars per unit. That's a lot of extra traffic that's going up and down Akoma, which is narrow. And it's very dangerous. So if, I, I don't know if this is the right forum, but maybe I should have been here earlier during the city council meeting. But I still think that commissioners, you carry a lot of weight in your decision. But what I, I, what we desire is that there is, is that you all in kind of mitigating the extra cars and extra traffic that will be between 30 East and 7th East is to place some traffic calming devices, such as that we find on 67. I got to look at the, the road number. Yeah, 6790. And there's also traffic calming devices on 6770. So it's not like it's a new idea. And it's been placed in the past. I go over those sometimes every day, especially when there's construction on one section of 6790. You got to go around and make your way through the division. I don't mind speed bumps. It keeps us down the, the speed to something reasonable and something not quite as dangerous. I tell you, there are people that just love to go super fast on Akoma. There's a church, there's a school nearby, as you know. But I think as a governing body, you all, and I don't mean to be disrespectful at all, but I think you all have the responsibility of saying, oh, hey, we're going to have these new developments. There's going to be X number of more cars on the same width of road. So we're not going to do anything about it. The last time we talked about, I was here to talk with, with you all about it, was when the, the under-construction development was going on. And, you know, it's just a matter of common sense. You know, and the, the response to my concerns from you all, from your commission, from the commissioners was, well, we'll, we'll take it under advisement and we'll have the city engineer look at it and, and perform a traffic study. Well, I really don't think that a traffic study will show that 25 or 50 more cars on a small street is going to be a good thing. It's, it's something that needs to happen simultaneously. Bring the developers in. We love them. But we don't like the extra danger that it produces on our street when there are cars parked on both sides and only one car can go, go through. And you have to pull around, let the other guy go through. And that has inherent dangers also. So there are some precedents for this on nearby streets on our, on our subdivision. If, you know, if a traffic study needs to happen, I just, come on, let's, let's be real about this. It's, it's going to be something that should happen and needs to happen right away.
I'm going to let Pendleton address.
On the screen, you see this webpage entitled Traffic Control Committee. It was, I don't know if you see that. And I can give you the link. There's a process for these types of improvements on a neighborhood street. You would basically express your grievance to this committee. The city engineer is a member of the committee. And then they, they will decide in, in what way and then how far that can be implemented.
Yeah, I'll try that. I've gone that, gone down that road before and my submittal was misplaced and there was no action on it. So I was a little disheartened that way. But I'll be willing to try it again. If I can be assured that it will be looked at at least and considered.
Encourage your neighbors as well to submit.
Yes.
It's a good thing.
The other thing I'll say is if you submit it and it's not properly handled, the city council is here to hear you every, every other Tuesday. And that's a perfect topic to bring to them.
All right.
Totally within their control as well.
Yeah, great. Any questions? Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else come up? Yes. Come up and state your name, please.
So my name is Michelle Ari. This is my husband, Aaron. And you want to come up and so you can add anything? Okay. So we are the house that's bordering. Our backyard is that empty lot where the plan is proposed. So I, we just have a few questions, some concerns, I guess. I tradition, so we moved into Midvale in 2010. We've been there for 15 years. Put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into our house and improving it and the yard. And I, I have felt some frustration with the approval of these kind of high-density housing developments in the middle of single-family residential neighborhoods. Because, you know, some of what's already been mentioned, it creates a lot more traffic. And it seems like a lot of units to fit in a small space. And so one of my concerns is parking. If you're going to have eight twin homes that are 3,300 square feet, there's got to be more than just garage space for parking because it creates a big issue. And we've seen it happen on 72nd and Third with that development. So I don't know what the plan is. We don't really know anything about the development yet. So I want to know if there is a, what the plan is for parking? Is there a, is there a plan there?
Does the code call for minimal parking on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand these minimal parking concepts. They don't, they sound nice. They don't seem to work nice. Because people have visitors. They, I mean, just in our, in our neighborhood, we've got single-family homes that have five and six cars at them. And they're smaller homes than these are proposed, you know? So I, I feel like there needs to be a plan for parking if we're going to build units this size and pack them in like this.
At this stage, we are with the small-scale master plan is what we're reviewing, which doesn't really get into the nitty-gritty of precise floor areas. And that's where, at this stage, this is more about subdividing the property. Correct, Elizabeth?
So I guess it still sort of fits, though, because if you're subdividing property for eight units, maybe we need to subdivide property for less units to provide for adequate parking. Eight units seems like a lot to fit in that space and have adequate parking. Are they two or three-story?
Uh, they don't, he doesn't have to commit to that at this stage.
At this, yeah, we don't have anything to look at at this point, so we don't know.
It's, it's not contingent on that for the small-scale master plan to get into that kind of detail.
Well, well, okay, but as far as, because if you approve eight units, right, then the parking does become an issue potentially in the approval process of eight units if there's not space for parking.
And that's within the code. And so that's prescribed by the code.
If they can't meet the guidelines of the code, then they can't build the eight units because they have to provide what the code requires them of for parking.
So does the, does the code require adequate space for parking?
Yeah, there's parking guidelines for every development.
The code will require two spaces per unit.
Two spaces per unit?
Two spaces of off-street parking is standard.
And that includes the, the curb on the side or that's within?
The driveway.
The driveway.
Driveway or, yeah.
So just, so just the space in front of the two-car garage would be sufficient according to code? And code is, is code open for change? That just doesn't seem like enough.
There, there is a process to change the code. Some of us here have experience with that, actually. So they come before us all the time, but there is, there is a process to change the code. I will tell you, this, the, the planning department is more than willing to assist you with suggesting code change. Code change would come to this committee. And then it would also be reviewed and approved ultimately by the city council.
Have, have you felt the heat a little bit as far as like the development on 72nd and Third and, and not having adequate parking there or complaints?
Parking is the number one comment we get as the planning.
It doesn't matter where the building is. It's always about parking.
So maybe we need to reassess code.
You could have 10 parking stalls per unit and it wouldn't be enough because everybody goes, well, you know, you've got two families in there, which means each person has, you know, that would be eight cars.
Sure, I mean, I mean within reason. I know that you're never going to satisfy everyone, but it just doesn't seem like the, the driveway in front of someone's garage is enough when you have eight units in a small space like that. It's just going to create issues.
Reasonable can be very subjective is what we've all determined.
Sure.
Unfortunately, because my idea of what's acceptable versus even Robin's.
Yeah, it's, it's just that, you know, traditionally, we see on this side, the size of a plot of land, one or two single-family homes. Not this many. So it's, that's the frustration I feel like I've felt living in. This is the sort of thing that potentially drives people like us out of our residence. We don't want to move. We love our house. We've put, like I said, a ton of blood, sweat and tears into it. But it does make it less appealing to stay when this sort of thing becomes our backyard, you know? It's a lot of, it's a lot of units in a small space. So that's my, that's our primary concern, that and parking. And I guess you probably don't know this yet, but we don't know. We wanted to know if there's a fencing.
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
And that's not a requirement?
Not for this, it's not. Not for a small-scale master plan.
Okay.
That's the next step?
Okay. And so that'll be future meetings?
The good news is the developer's here. And so like, he's a, he's a great person to speak to in the brown shirt.
Okay, so can we like be in touch so we can learn more and work together?
Yeah, I've been going to that property my whole life, to my grandma's. So I'd love to talk.
You're a level?
I love them.
Okay, sweet.
So after this meeting, you can?
You have great fun. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we generally find developers are like pretty in tune with the community.
Yeah, we just, we just want to be involved in the process before it's too late. I think there's been some things where we didn't find out until it was too late for any effective change to happen. And so it was sort of like, well, we're going to bear it.
We'll just do the subdivision.
Okay.
That's all we're, we, nothing else we.
So, so with parking, though, if you approve eight, is the approval tonight?
Just for the subdivision. Just the subdivision. Nothing else.
And the master plan.
But if we approve to do eight, then it potentially affects parking, right? Because, okay.
Maybe, maybe just to clarify a little bit. So these, we're talking about four structures and they're twin homes. So two dwelling units in each structure. So very similar to what you already found on Akoma Road as an example today. So this isn't anything that's, you know, out of the scale of the neighborhood as it is right now. I mean, most likely, these units will be very similar. Of course, homes go through, you know, certain types of fats, I guess. So they make it different. But in essence, it's, it's not different than what you see on the street today.
With the exception of yard space, I would imagine. Because the twin homes on Akoma have fairly decent-sized yards.
Yeah, these will too. I mean, this is very deep. I mean, if, if you look just at the picture, the red.
Is it 3, 3,300 square foot per twin home or, or?
We don't have those because we're still working with our, right now, this plan.
Oh, I was, the sign says 3,300.
Yeah, so we're, that's the design we're working with right now, cemented city.
And that's, but is that 3,300 square feet each unit or like per twin home?
No, each unit, no.
Each unit. And you do have yard space?
We have huge yards.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I, I would just love to talk to him more and.
That'd be great.
I think that was one of my comments when I saw just the preliminary scribbles on plan was these are deep yards.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my first comment.
If you're really having four structures, you're talking it's going to be nice. And the plus side is they're for sale.
Yes, which I'm so thankful for.
A lot of that has changed, so that's a real positive thing.
I'm so thankful for that, yes. So, yeah, thanks for, for hearing us. Traffic and parking is our primary concern, I think.
Thanks for being here. Yeah, thank you for participating. We appreciate it.
My name is Craig Howser. I live at 381 East Akoma Road. And I know David Garce has already expressed the same concerns I have. But leaning right on that corner, these people come flying around there. And with cars parked on that narrow street, I've almost been in a head-on collision just trying to get in my driveway several times here in the last two or three weeks. And with the additional traffic, I'm very concerned that we need to do something to control the speed of those people coming around that corner especially. But I'll work with David and work with the neighbors on the traffic.
Do it. The more said about it, the better off it is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Eric Olson. I'm at 6734 South 300 East. So I'm already in the middle of all this construction with the 27 units. I guess every window I look out right now is being blocked by a house, a super tall house. I'll have seven or eight families looking into my backyard from their second-story window as it is. I just want to know kind of what's going to be, what the rough plan, I guess, is. Because my, I have one window that looks out my front window looking east to the mountains, and that's the only view I have. So I'll probably sell the house if a house is going to block that view. So I just want to know. I just bought this house in November. I just bought this house in November, so I just wanna kind of know, like, where these houses are gonna be built. So I can plan to sell the house if needed, I guess. So I don't know if there's any plan with that.
The code calls for certain setbacks, uh, from like the corners and from the front. And like, other than that, he's free to build within the confines of the setbacks.
Okay. So.
We don't know. I would suggest talking to the developer.
Okay, okay. Another thing, parking, people fly down Three Hundred East towards the apartments, towards the highway going north. So like, it'd be awesome if we could get, again, some speed bumps between, what is that, sixty-seven ninety and Three Hundred East? Because the road narrows, so if a car parks on Three Hundred East right there. Like, people haul, haul down that road, so again, traffic and speed migration on Three Hundred East too would be awesome. But yeah, that's all I got to say, I guess.
Did you see the traffic, the, the link?
Yeah.
We shared earlier?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Make sure you go out there and do it.
As many people as you can get to do that, the better off you're gonna be.
Okay.
You'll get some.
So work with the two gentlemen here, that would be great.
Okay, awesome, thank you guys.
Thank you, thanks for being here. Anyone else? Okay.
I move that we close the public hearing portion of this item.
A second? All in favor, or do I have to do roll call?
I can't remember.
Is that like a wrong line? Sorry.
I can't remember. Is it roll call?
He, the developer should be advancing.
All in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, second, we've rolled into this, but I still have to go ahead and say it.
Yeah.
Well, and make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We're not done.
Sorry, we're not done. I was gonna make a motion for just all of it at one time. R and me. Harvey, can we get a motion on this, guys?
Uh, do we want legal to say anything first?
Legal, do we need you?
It's up to you.
We always need you.
Oh, thank you. So this is an administrative decision that the planning commission is to make. If they do meet all of the code requirements as it's outlined in the city, you are required to approve the plans. The only way you can deny it is if they don't meet the requirements of the code.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, can I get one?
In my reading, I think it looks like it meets all of them. Given that, I move that we approve the small-scale master plan for an eight-unit duplex development located at sixty-seven fifty-five South Three Hundred East with the findings included in the staff report.
I second.
Can I get a roll call on that?
Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair, sorry. Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Littke?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, so that one passed, let's go to the second one now. Here we go. Brent LaVale requests preliminary subdivision approval for an eight-unit duplex development located at sixty-seven fifty-five South Three Hundred East in a single-family residential S F dash one zone. Liz?
Do your presentation.
Deal.
No presentation from me, you already saw it all, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we need to open public hearing on individual items?
Yes. So we'll open the public hearing now on the second phase of this.
I think we need to explain what the second phase is.
Okay.
Seeing that there's no one coming forward, I move that we close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I think we heard from them on both of those on our first one.
Oh, and I will say on the Bradford Peach, Brad, Bradford Pear. There was an excellent sixty minutes story about that, so I think in some areas, they call it an invasive species, so I'm with you on that.
Hundred percent.
Yep, do not recommend.
Gosh, do we need anything?
We need to make a motion.
Let's do it.
I move that we approve the preliminary subdivision located at sixty-seven fifty-five South Three Hundred East with the findings included in the staff report.
Second.
Can I get a roll call?
Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Littke?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's passed. We'll move on now to the Midvale City initiated request to amend various use tables entitled seventeen of the Midvale City Municipal Code correcting clerical errors related to business license requirement. Liz, are you doing that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
This is where it gets exciting.
Very exciting. Been hard at work cooking things up for you. So as exciting as that sounds, we did conduct an audit over our use tables regarding business licenses. I have hardly any slides for you on this because we just went through and identified any places where the use table had an X or a dot that said they required a business license when either we did or did not. So this did not affect very many sections of code. We mostly saw instances where probably they were copy and pasted from another land use zone, so that.
If we could have conversations move out to the foyer?
That would be great.
That would help us with our business. We started at six, and so.
No, six. Six. We always start at six.
The, the packet is published at six thirty.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you.
It was very distracting.
Um, this affected only a handful of our zones, maybe six or seven of them. The things mostly dealt with home occupations, private kennels, things like that. So we just went through and corrected them, which is why it looked like a very long amendment in your packet, though it was not anything terribly exciting. So as usual, we have a section of our code that outlines how you approve text amendments. You are required to find that it meets at least one of them, and we found these to be a result of a clerical error, just a mistake copying and pasting from zones, and it didn't get caught. So I've got a motion for you unless you've got any other questions for me.
I only had the one question that I hope is on this section and not one of the other ones. There was a clerical error related to home office no longer requiring a business license, or maybe we're saying it does require, or maybe it was home occupation?
Home occupation, yes. And there were a couple where it wasn't required and we do require it.
That was, yeah.
Yes.
What, what's the definition of home occupation?
Uh, it's, so it does have to meet some very specific standards, like it doesn't take up a certain percentage of the home, and they can't have outside employees, and if they have vehicles. So they have like a whole affidavit that they sign and submit with that that says that it will be conducted in the confines and not exceeding that.
Thank you.
Yeah. The other one that we saw really often was private kennels, which is basically our definition for like, if you have three dogs or something, three animals, I think, was the threshold, and we don't require a business license. They can't do anything for monetary gain, so stuff like that, we're just, the code didn't match what our definition says. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
I think I need to open this for public.
Yeah. You do, these are a public hearing.
It's true. I'm gonna open this now for public.
Seeing as the public has left, we don't have any comments. I move that we close the public hearing portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, good job.
I'll make a motion, thank you. I move that we recommend approval of the amendment as provided in the attachments with the finding noted in the staff report.
I second.
Roll call?
Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Littke?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next is the Midvale City Initiative Request to Amend Section seventeen dash seven dash four point three of the Midvale City Municipal Code relating to multifamily development standard. Liz, again?
Yes. Have you seen enough of me?
No.
This one is slightly more interesting, I hope you'll find. So we do a lot of developments in the RM twenty-five zone, a lot of multifamily developments that come in. So this cleanup was mostly to make it more straightforward, easier to interpret, so I've tried to just bullet what the proposed changes were that were included in your packet. First one is the calculation of the lot area. There was kind of some, I don't know how that was written, that said, you know, multifamily developments require X square footage, and then a certain square footage for the first unit, and then more square footage for every unit after that. And that just seemed kind of needlessly difficult for us to calculate at the counter with people and who came in. So we changed that to be a little bit more straightforward to just they need a half acre, and then they're required to provide just under two thousand square feet for every unit in their development, for their lot calculation. We also added some language that you'll see with our duplex developments that explicitly states that projects that meet the overall law area requirements can then be subdivided to allow for individual unit ownership.
Did we kind of do that just now at this meeting?
Uh, well, no. The other one was a, a lot-by-lot development, but this would basically allow them to not include the yards.
Okay.
It would just be the units.
Okay, thank you.
And our legal team is really thrilled with this change because we had to do some gymnastics to make that happen before. So now we've made it very clear that, yes, the intent is to, your project meets it as a whole, and then those townhomes or whatever can be divided for individual. The other thing we did was change just a couple things with the lot width and lot frontage, and we basically matched the duplex standards, which were a little bit larger. The multifamily ones were smaller, and we didn't think that really matched what was necessary. And then we also removed any exceptions that they had for cul-de-sacs. Basically said any multifamilies on a cul-de-sac could have less width or less frontage. We don't, I, I don't think I've ever seen a multifamily development on a cul-de-sac, and we just figured the larger frontage makes more sense for a larger project like that. So we didn't want to keep that exception any longer. And with our criteria to make the text amendment, we found that it more clearly explains the original intent and makes interpretation more straightforward for us. So, any questions for me?
Will you answer mine, thank you.
Okay.
Would you like to open this up to the public?
Seeing no public comment, I move we close the public hearing portion at this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I move that we recommend approval of the amendment as provided in the attachments with the finding noted in the staff report.
I'll second.
Can I get a roll call on that?
Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Littke?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Midvale City Initiated Request to Amend Section seventeen dash seven dash one zero point twelve point five of the Midvale City Municipal Code entitled Development Requirements of the Jordan Bluff Subareas. Did I say that right?
Mm-hmm.
One through three zone relating to public road standard, Vandalan.
Yes, this is also relatively simple change here. If you think back to our last, last large-scale master plan approval for the Gardner Company and Wasatch Development. On Segini Drive, just south of the area that's currently being developed in Jordan Bluffs. There is a road, a public street, that almost bisects that property, starts on Segini and then finds its way to Bingham Junction. So everyone sort of have a mental image.
The Squidle Room?
It's kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's in our code, that's called a tertiary road. And in the large-scale master plan, the developer proposed a cross-section that is slightly different than what's shown in the ordinance. It's actually, you could say, an upgrade to what we have. They are proposing to add parallel parking that is, you know, you could say structured with bump outs. I don't know if you remember that from, from the plans. So this little change to the ordinance, so we added at minimum, or at a minimum, in four areas. That's just to ensure that they're not running a foul, the technicalities of the language in the code when, when we proceed further with the approval process. I mean, that's, that's what this changes about. And this, you know, God on earth, that's part of reviewing the development agreement. And the, this entire process in the Jordan Bluffs area, this in the Jordan Bluffs one, two, three sub-area zone, is very unique because we have, you could say, a deductive approval process. We, we start very general with the large-scale master plan, which is really conceptual. And then, you know, we work ourselves down to more detailed site plans, plaids if needed, and so on. The only thing that disturbs that a little bit is that we also have a development agreement, and in an agreement, everything needs to be really cut and dry, otherwise we aren't protected if something goes wrong. So that's why this came up. And this in our, you know, review criteria, there are many that apply, but I picked number three, that clarifies, and we do want to also encourage the private sector to, you know, innovate. We don't just want to stand here as a city, you must, you know, implement this certain road cross-section just because it got approved this way forty years ago. I'm exaggerating a little bit, this wasn't forty years ago, but so, and that's why we thought, you know, this is actually a good thing, and we, we don't want to, you know, make the life hard for the developer with this.
So to clarify, you would be stating that it's a minimum requirement?
Right, yeah.
And so any, like, improvement could be allowed?
Right.
Okay.
That's exactly it. And what they are proposing is also actually a little bit wider than what the ordinance shows.
Yeah, because they were doing the parallel parking, and then like the little bump outs for traffic calming.
Yeah, yeah. And so the added width actually comes, and they, they have a, in their design, a waterway, so instead of, you know, a normal curb, it's one of those flat cement sort of dividers almost. However, I will say they're still working with this a little bit, and they just had a meeting with the city engineer, so they're, they're looking at, is there any way to make this even better? So. So as staff, you know, we recommend approval of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We're good. Open this public hearing?
Seeing there's no one here, I move that we close the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, could we have a motion?
I move that we recommend approval of the amendment to Section seventeen dash seven dash ten point twelve point five of the Midvale Municipal Code relating to public road standards in the Jordan Bluff Subareas one through three zone, as provided in the attachment based on the finding noted in the staff report.
I second.
Roll call?
Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Littke?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we have staff update and other business, please.
Planning Commission's role and city council goals.
Wow, I know.
Sounds like a lot of responsibility.
Whoa.
Big ones.
Can we send our goals to them as well?
Reciprocing.
So I'll give you a little background on this. Not this last, not this calendar year, but the last calendar year, the council at their annual budget retreat formulated some goals that they had as a council to carry us through the next five or so years. At this budget retreat, they took a look at them and said, how are we in achieving these goals? What are we doing for implementation steps? And so these are long-term strategies that we're gonna go over. And so what I thought might be just kind of interesting or helpful is, as a planning commission, what you do is very vital in helping the city achieve these goals. And so I just wanted to let you know what they are, and then some ideas that I had that I see that you're already doing as planning commissioners in helping to reach these goals. So the city came up, they had a facilitator, went through a bunch of exercises, and they boiled it down to four main goals. And then under those goals, they listed a bunch of steps, and what does implementation, what does success look like? So the first two were, the first one was intentional long-range planning and infrastructure. The second goal that got boiled out of all of this was financial stability. This one has a little less to do with you as a planning commission, but I still thought of one or two things that what I feel you do helps this. The third one they came out with was communication and public engagement. And then the fourth was establish a Midvale identity. And so, again, this year in January, when we had our budget retreat, we looked at what we're doing and how we're trying to implement these four main goals. So we have, I mean, obviously, we're at the beginning of it, but we have some things that we've been implementing and doing that I feel and other staff feel that we've kind of met this. But I kind of wanted to tailor it to you as a planning commission. So with that in mind, looking at the first two goals, that of intentional long-range planning and infrastructure and financial stability. And this, some of these came from the city council as well, but I think they apply to the planning commission. Periodically, we are updating our zoning code. We did that tonight. You had a couple amendments that you recommended approval of. So as we go through and, and look at those updates, what makes sense? How should those be updated? What does that look like? And how you carry that forward? Along with that is being intentional with the zoning that aligns with various master plans or visions for the community. So you look at things like the Fort Union Corridor Study, the State Street Study, the station area plans. We've already brought forward some of those changes to help implement those studies. So the council really wants to be intentional with the zoning, and if a zoning request or a zone change request comes before them, they are trying to remember this, you know, we're being intentional with this. And I think you as a planning commission already do this. You are very intentional when those zone change requests come before you, and you try to look at the big picture rather than just that particular piece of property. One of the things that's important to the council is the preservation of existing single-family neighborhoods. This was brought up in the station area plan, especially the Center Street Station Area Plan had areas of stability, as they were called. The council and you as a planning commission seem to be very proactive and supporting of higher-density development, but it needs to make sense where it goes. And so even tonight, I would, I would argue that the duplex development is not high-density. It's just, it still makes sense in the area that it is, and that's intentional. And so your approval of that tonight, I feel, was, was fairly intentional. We're working with a, we're nearing the tail end of a Parks and Open Space Master Plan. You should be seeing a draft of this within the next, maybe, month. You should be seeing a draft of this within the next maybe month or two. What we're hoping to identify with that is where, what are areas of the city that we have need for parks and open space? Not only where is there a need, but how can we go about improving that and maybe obtaining that, whether that's through a purchase or some kind of an agreement with maybe a school or something? So you'll see that coming before you. And we're pushing forward with our canal trail study. I mean, the study is done. Elizabeth and I are working with a consultant group on that. We're furthering design concepts. We've run into a little bit of a roadblock with one of the canal companies, but we still have grant funding that we would like to use. How do we best use that? Well, this next, in the next couple weeks, we're taking forward an amendment to the contract for the council to consider that allows us to move forward with enhanced design work along the canal trail. So when we get over that roadblock, we have largely a shovel-ready project, and then we'll work on funding to actually construct it. The second goal of financial stability, we want the city to be financially stable, and how do we go about doing that? One of the, one of the options that I think you do as a planning commission is, when developments come forward, you are aware of the various master plans that come into play for those certain areas, whether it's, again, the Fort Union Corridor or station area plan. Does the development come in? Does it kind of meet the objectives and goals and vision of what that plan is? And if so, it should be approved. Also, supporting development that expands the tax base. That's, that came directly from the council. They want to support development that expands the tax base. And I think you as a planning commission have shown that through your various approvals as things come before you. And then the other two goals, communication and public engagement. This is, I know this is huge for you, Commissioner Tippett. You are always trying to find ways to kind of engage public and get the word out there with what you do as a planning commission. You're very supportive of participation in public hearings. You listen to what is being said, and you consider that. That's visible from where, whether I'm sitting on that side or that side. You know, I can, I can see that, and I know that you take that into consideration and really think about what's being brought forward. If there's any kind of messaging that you'd like to get out, we have a communications director that's very, very much involved with social media platforms and newsletters. If there's some kind of blurb that you would like the communications director to send out, get in touch with her or get in touch with me, and I can, I can relay those messages. And then together, we can look at that and say, is this, you know, does this make sense, what we want to put out there? And we're happy to do that. Many of you have come to various master plan open houses. Or, I think one of the most successful ones that we did, it was rather than a traditional open house format, it was at Mural Fest, the consultant group that's doing the parks and open space plan came. And the, the participation was incredible. I'd never seen that many people involved in, in comments for the master plan, and so that was great. What are some ideas outside of the traditional open house forum? Well, Mural Fest was great to push this Parks and Open Space Master Plan. The word really got out there, and their little booth was just, just hopping with activity all day. And many of you also volunteer with Main Street and various city events. Shane and I froze to death at the Christmas one, but, but, but it gets the face out there when people ask, oh, who are you? Well, I'm on the planning commission. Well, either A, what is that? Or, well, I have, you know, I want you to look at this, you know? I mean, it's just, the, your, your face and your voice are able to get out there through various engagement activities and opportunities. And then the, the last strategic goal of the council, establish a Midvale identity. The council is very keen on the continued promotion of Main Street and the Main Street cultural area. And I think you as a planning commissioner are aware of this too, as different projects come forward or different activities that you're able to volunteer with or participate in, since many of them center on Main Street. Just continue to do that. As we go through our different plans, just continuing to highlight different plan elements and how they come into effect or come into play with different projects. And again, the, the next one, where development adheres to master plans, station area plans, et cetera, this is something that I know you're aware of as things come before you. And I think you're going to be seeing more, especially in the station area plans come before you. We're seeing renewed interest and activity in our, in development of some of those areas. And then we have a big Center Street kind of redevelopment project coming up that you may have seen concepts for. As this moves forward, this is just a great thing to really tie the city together through Center Street, from the Jordan River to the canal trails, and just this linear park-type facility that will be there. I know the council's very excited for that, and I think this, it's a great opportunity for you as a planning commission to promote that as well in ways that you can. So I'm open to questions, but this was just kind of, I wanted to give you what the council strategic goals were, and then just some of the bullet points that I think you play into. Whether you see it or not, you really do. So thank you for your support in what you do. And if things come forward, I'm happy to give updates, so.
I have one question on the prior slide. Number one, can you talk about the interplay between zone code updates and preservation of single-family neighborhood, neighborhoods? I'm like interested in how we go about preservation with also updating, like, like, can you unpack that a little?
So really, what the, what they mean by preservation of existing single-family neighborhoods is when we are doing code updates, just looking at what makes sense in those, what they would call, what we would call areas of stability. So in, let's say, in the middle of an existing single-family neighborhood, maybe the duplex overlay makes sense, but a higher-density zone designation does not. Where you could have maybe a duplex or a couple duplexes rather than maybe a twenty-unit, whether it's townhome or condo project, there are other areas for those slightly higher-density developments.
An example, I think, is that you, the Housing Authority or the homeless, they wanted to build the big...
Yes.
...structure in the middle of the neighborhood that we just felt it was too much.
Yeah, you recommended against that zone change, the council upheld that, didn't it?
The one off of Seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's needed, but not there. Utilization of the property, but not the area.
I think that's when the planning terms come into effect, because as we can see, someone from the public saying twin homes is high-density, but in fact, there's an actual definition of what high-density or medium-density is. And so acknowledging that there's an actual term for single-family, and a duplex overlay might be appropriate. We're not talking about, you know, RM twenty-five.
And, and I believe right before I started, I believe the code was amended, and they took out the ability to do multifamily master plans in the middle of single-family neighborhoods. And so now, that is no longer the case. I mean, you can do basically attached units or duplex units, but there were some instances where there were multiple units being placed in the middle of single-family neighborhoods, and the council really didn't like the way that was going, and they thought there are other areas that this makes more sense in. And so that was removed from single-family zones. And so that's kind of the, being intentional with your zoning. Is this something we want? Yes. But where does it most make sense? And let's fix the code to make it work there.
Have they started construction on the signage?
The entryway signs? No, not yet. We have the first three where we want them, and it's just working with a company to get estimates and then go through that process.
Excuse me, what signage?
We're getting new signs.
The entryway monument signs.
The entries into...
Yeah, they all, there's, there's an article coming out in the next, whatever that little paper is. Because I was meeting with the reporter on that. So there'll be pictures, and I'm in there, so. Not in the pictures, thankfully.
I will say you're a very professional cheerleader. That was very good to come back to, hearing all the great things that we do. So thank you for tying it back to the city council goals.
I have a question about communication. I, the people I talked to around me had no clue about Harvest Days. Nobody, they were like, and I didn't feel like it went out as good.
Plus, I wasn't on the float this year, so you missed it.
Well, that's why, that's why. You just need to be on a float, and they'll all know.
It just, I mean, my kids come from Bluffdale to see that. They think that's fun.
Yeah, I know, I mean...
It just wasn't...
I can't speak from a resident's point of view, just because I, I hear about it a lot, being a staff member.
Nobody up by me.
And as staff members, we do, I mean, we attend the block parties, have a block party, that could get the word out.
And I, I agree, because usually we get flyers on our street, and we got nothing.
Yeah, we got nothing.
And the parade goes down my street.
My husband's like, are you in it? I said, I didn't even know what was happening.
We showed up at the park like the Thursday before, and the frisbee golf was like all taken down, and it was like, oh, it's Harvest Days, like, no wonder it's down, and so...
Well, just, so you'll always remember, it's always the first weekend in August, regardless of what you hear.
Yeah, I think it, maybe it relied a bit heavily on social media, because that's...
And maybe.
There's a lot of people, you think about, there's a lot of older people that aren't on social media, don't...
I can take that, and I can take that back to other, you know, various staff members.
A flyer should go out to every resident.
I thought the journal had...
I think the journal had something, but not...
But you gotta open it.
Yeah, but, but you gotta read it to know. Yeah. If you had it in your mailbox, you'd be more inclined, some single fantastic thing about it would be, I felt bad because I thought we would have, I mean, it would have been great to go, but...
The fireworks were great.
Well, and it's around the same time the property tax notices go out. Let's just do a stuffer, right?
Yeah, why not stuff it in there?
They definitely opened those, so.
I don't know, I'm just saying, I felt bad because I thought there would have been a lot more, and even when my kids, the last time, they just thought it was great because they got to see, you know, their nan on a float and all that. And they, I mean, they're coming from Bluffdale to see it.
Well, if ever, if any of you are ever inclined to hold a block party, Shane has pointers for that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't think that'd work on our street.
It probably wouldn't in my little complex.
You'd be surprised.
You could do it.
You'd be surprised.
Your complex would be perfect.
I could have a pool party.
Exactly.
Oh, that's the best block party.
Thanks.
But yeah, if you have any other questions, feel free to always reach out to me if you have ideas of different things. I think you already have it, so. You know where to find me.
Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, Adam. Next. Land use training. Are you presenting that to us?
Yes.
Okay.
We're so excited.
I am.
Yeah.
Sorry, I know, sorry.
Something wrong with you.
I hear there's a lot of excitement. Well, actually, we are not doing land use training quite this second, because first we need to talk about planning commission dinner.
The twenty-fifth, can we move, can we have it on a different day?
Sure, I mean, it's, it's for you. If you need to be able to go, so.
Well, I, I think that's the VIP night that I have to be at for Murray City.
Because you are at the VIP.
I don't think it's a bad idea to go to a restaurant if anybody's up for that.
You want to go to a restaurant?
I'd like to, my feeling is, I would like to give the business to, like, you know, we've talked before, some of the newer ones that are just opening, wouldn't it be great if we went in there and said, hey, we want to support you, and...
Well, we did that with our last dinner. We went to the pizza place.
That's right. Yeah.
I mean, in the past, we've always, we've sort of taken...
Yeah, whatever, I'm just saying, it'd be nice for some of the newer ones that have just popped up.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Yeah, that...
Because I really wanted that new grill, that new one on State. Friends went to it and said it was fantastic, clean and really good.
It's the little, like, it feels impromptu food truck court that's right off of State on Seventy-Eighth.
Oh, that's so busy over there.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's packed, is that...
All the time.
All the time.
All the time.
Anyway.
Have you stopped? Is it good?
I haven't stopped, but it's super busy.
We come down here every Tuesday for dinner.
Taco Tuesday. So would we still want to do it at Candy's, even if it's not going to be on the twenty-fifth?
I mean, I can do it at my house, I just can't do it on that Thursday, just because I think that's the night where it's the VIP, because the other concert's on Friday, and I have to be at the VIP event.
Should we maybe do this? You know, we have next planning commission come up in two weeks. Everyone double-check their calendars, and if, you know, if you know you can't, then just send out...
Do, do we want to for sure do it on a Thursday, or could we look at other days?
I'm flexible.
I think just Wednesday and Tuesday would be sometimes on commission.
Yeah, yeah, so Wednesday and Tuesdays don't work, but we could do it another night.
We could do it the eighteenth.
Yeah, I think the eighteenth works for me.
Yeah, eighteenth works for me.
And I'm back in town, I could do the eighteenth, because I get back in town the fourteenth. So yeah, the eighteenth works for me, and I could do that at my house, if that's what you want to do.
I'm fine with your house, it's fun.
Whatever works. Yes.
So Monday, the eighteenth?
It's a Thursday, the eighteenth.
Of September.
I'm in the wrong month, yep.
Yeah. That'd be better, because my anniversary's the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
We could do it then, and you could double-dip.
Wouldn't your husband like that?
That's a really good idea.
I could move it forty-nine years.
Forty-nine?
Forty-nine years.
And you can share that with forty-nine of us that show up.
Exactly.
So, the eighteenth, the eighteenth of September, and I'm happy to host it at my house, and we can, I mean, we did, we did food truck, a food truck before, we can...
On the food truck, any preferences?
Nope.
Did you guys like the taco?
Some good.
The taco, um, one that came was really good at my house.
They were really good. They were really good.
I liked all the salsas.
They're local, they're a Midvale business, so.
Oh, bonus.
I'd be okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Were they? I know that's one way to get Jaime there.
Okay, then. This price really will, that's how you...
Tacos.
Yeah, but they, it was really good, and they had lots of, they had lots of different...
We checked just that one restaurant on State Street that catered to us, because it was...
The Fajita one?
Yeah, my friends said it was fabulous.
No, the new one on State Street.
It used to be the paint shop.
It's on the west side of State, just as you get ready to turn the corner onto Center Street.
They said it was so clean and so good.
Yeah, it's really good. It's kind of Mediterranean.
Yeah.
We can check.
Yeah.
What's the name of it?
It's pretty new.
It's called Fajita something. Fajita Grill is what it's called.
Yeah, Fajita Grill.
So that would be choice one, and then...
Well, and I, I do, I'm just throwing that out.
Well, no, I think that's good for them, because they just opened. The taco truck was awesome, they did everything. They pulled it in, they did everything. They cooked it all there, it was all, yeah.
Whichever works.
Okay.
We can try something, maybe we have a good backup.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's not do B and D, though, okay?
No.
Sorry. Kate, don't put that in. Wow.
Okay, next. I sent out a message to all of you in the afternoon today about training opportunities.
Did I get it? I didn't see one this afternoon, but I'll...
Yeah, I don't see it. Liar.
It could be, that's...
It's the tail is all the time.
That is a possibility.
He didn't attach.
Well, let me talk you through it, and if it's still stuck somewhere, you might get it tonight, so.
Okay, yeah, I don't see anything. Training opportunity.
Yeah, so first of all, for those who would like and still can, the Utah Bike Summit actually happens this week, it's tomorrow in Provo, at Utah Valley University. And then we have the APA conference coming up in October. It's the ninth and tenth, that should be a Thursday into Friday. Same thing again this year, if we can get three of you to come, we get a very good rate. And it's basically, you have three, you get the fourth one in for free, so the more of you...
I would like to go.
Okay, if, if you already know, let me know right now, or send me a message so that we can get... we can get that, you know, going. Then the Utah APA has a webcast series and there are a couple coming up in the next two weeks. The one that maybe especially interesting is on the 19th, so that would be next Tuesday. And it's about the downtown plan for Saratoga Springs. And the consultant that has helped Saratoga Springs is someone we are very familiar with, it's MHD and architecture. They've, they've done quite a few plans for us, the parks plan right now, they're the main consultants, so this may be quite interesting.
What time of day is it?
It's at noon and it's, it's over Zoom, about forty-five minutes.
And all this was in your email, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, so we're going to get that in.
Yes, once you, once you get it, you will be able to click on links, so. All right, otherwise, I wanted to just let you know that for land use training, next time, we'll talk about chapter 12, not very long. And if there's anything in previous chapters, any questions, let me know. If, you know, we sort of skimmed over a lot last time, just let me know and I may pick one or two things from the previous chapters that might be of interest. Then I had planned to show you a video that fits in with quite a few things that the city is doing and it also has a land use training aspect to it, but I think we might do that next time. And just so that you can already start thinking about this, this video is about bike lanes and there have been that the state law changed on bike lanes, it's now illegal to park in a bike lane, so on the state level. And the, this video is, it's quite interesting how it details, you know, a bit of the research behind bike lanes and how a humble bike lane actually has quite a bit of impact. And that will also tie in with some of our studies and plans for the future. You know, we've been working on the Porter Rockwell Trail and the Canal Trails. The Canal Trail in a way is easy, there is a canal, there's quite a bit of width usually and we can fit a trail next to it. The Porter Rockwell Trail on the regional plan is located along a railroad track and normally one would think this should be doable, but we're starting to discover that maybe this is a lot harder than everyone thought and hence we may need some parallel routes. We hopefully can do some important sections next to the track where you're truly off the street, but some other sections we probably aren't. So anyway, that's really everything I had for you today.
Okay. Thank you.